Mr. Albro.
President.
Ms. Calderon.
Here.
Mr. Dukoska. Ms. Cofferter.
Here.
Mr. Lombardi. Mr. Luna.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Dunn.
Here.
President Gomez.
Here.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions in the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Borough Hall on the New Milford Hall of Library. Notices have been sent to the record in the Twin Borough News. The Board announces that under its long-standing policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first, at the beginning of the meeting, for agenda items only, and the second, at the end of the meeting, for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the State of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. Okay, Mackenzie, you want to go?
Sure. Hello, everyone. I hope everyone's having a great January so far and also had a very happy holiday. Our Student Council has been pretty busy since returning from winter break. Firstly, our hot chocolate sales in December were very successful. With the success of the sales, we'll be continuing through the winter time on Friday mornings. Our Student Council is enjoying keeping our students warm with hot chocolate as they enter on Fridays, and we're excited to continue. Also, we're beginning planning and preparations for our Spring Week. We're also beginning to plan the Olympic events, which will take place on the last day of the Spring Spirit Week. And our school store is being revamped to reopen for a Valentine's Day launch. We're really excited to celebrate Valentine's Day with the opening of our new and improved school store. And our Student Council officers are working with the SOAT Club to run an assembly for Martin Luther King Junior Day. The assembly will focus on the principles and morals that guided Martin Luther King and how that can influence young leaders today. We're so proud of our student leaders for taking initiative to create this wonderful presentation. The presentation will take place next week after we return from the break.
Any questions from the family?
Do you have any hot chocolate with you down?
Mackenzie, what is this all about? You said Valentine's.
No, okay, right.
On an actual...
As long as we're in school, Valentine's, so that yes, I don't know how the date's lined up.
It is an actual school day because we have something else planned. So I do know it is a week, so excited.
Okay, superintendent of school.
Hi, everybody. Any of you who are not around, well, I mean, you were all around, you weren't around, so Happy New Year, and to everyone out there, Happy New Year, everyone at home watching. I will start with, I'll do a few business items and then I'll go to the good stuff. I'll stop. Okay, so first I would do my HIV reports. So for Berkeley Street Elementary School, we have one case that was brought to the principal for review. It was forwarded to the HIV specialist for full investigation. And it did not meet the criteria for harassment, intimidation, and bullying, so will be likely to be addressed as code of conduct. At Gibbs. There were four incidents that were brought to the principal for review. All four of those were forwarded to the HIV specialist for a full investigation. And none of the four were identified as meeting the definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying will be addressed as code of conduct violations. At Davy Owens Middle School. Four incidents were brought to the principal for review. Three were forwarded to the HIV specialist for full investigation, and one was not. Out of the three, the number of active HIV cases that are still being investigated is three. So they might have started prior, but we don't have a final decision on those, probably still collecting information at the time these are printed. And then at the high school for December, no HIV cases sent to the principal for review. Suspensions. Berkeley had none. Gibbs had none. The middle school had four separate incidents. One incident of vandalism, one day of out-of-school suspension. An incident of misconduct, which resulted in two days of out-of-school suspension. Another incident of misconduct, which resulted in three days of out-of-school suspension. And a third incident of misconduct, which resulted in one day of use school suspension. Suspension report at the high school. Three different incidents. One day of in-school suspension each, all for vaping. And one having two days of out-of-school suspension for vaping with positive toxicology screen. And that is as per policy and regulation. That's why I wanted to get that out of the way, because I would like to talk about some happy things. So I would first like to talk about last night. So Docsoni and Mr. Manipelli and the administrators at the high school were all present last night for the Tri-M Music and Art Honor Society induction. Which is one of my favorite inductions because there's a concert first. Because part of the being inducted requires you to actually perform and/or showcase your art, et cetera. So we had a really wonderful night. Mackenzie, got to see her do her thing last night. And as always, it was a beautiful evening. And you know, it was funny because I thought sometimes when I come to these events, somebody wants me to speak, right? I was actually relieved I could just be an audience member last night and participate. But I thought to myself, oh, my gosh, if I were going to speak, I came across this quote by Kurt Vonnegut, and I thought this is what I would have shared last night. You are speaking tomorrow. I am speaking tomorrow, so I'm ready for that. I thought, no, I thought I was gonna... Okay, so Kurt Vonnegut was having a conversation with someone and he told him, no, I don't play any sports. I do theater, I'm in choir, I play the violin and the piano, and I used to take art classes. And the guy said to him, he said, wow, you know, that's amazing. And Kurt Vonnegut says, no, 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 I'm not really good at any of them. Everybody there last night was great, but this is just Kurt. He said, I'm not really good at any of them. And the gentleman said to him, he said something that I will never forget and which absolutely blew my mind because no one had ever said anything to him like that before. And he said, I don't think being good at those things is a point of doing any of them. He said, I think you've got all these wonderful experiences and different skills and talents, and that all teaches you things and makes you an interesting person, no matter how well you do them. And I thought, I thought about that last night, obviously, successful author. I thought about that last night, that even if the students go on to doing other things and never pursue music or art, you know, as a location or a profession or career, that it does make you an interesting person to have all those things in your repertoire. And it was so great to see last night. Tonight, I had the opportunity to see the Lady Knights basketball team beat Elmwood Park. Can't ask me the sport because I only just saw the end of the game and I don't remember what it was. But they played really hard. It was, it was an aggressive team, a well-skilled team, and they played really well together. So that, that was nice to see, and we had a nice showing on the home side, so that was great. I won't say anything about the refs not calling fouls on our team, but that's, we're just gonna go right past that because we're talking about happy things, right? Okay, and then tomorrow night, we have the National Honor Society induction at the high school at seven. I'm looking forward to that. And before that, we have a wrestling match that I'm looking forward to. That's supposed to be a big one. So, okay, those are good things going on this week. And if any of you out there are interested in seeing any of our teams play, almost all of them, I believe, are videoed so that you can stream them and watch them if you can't make it here, but of course, we'd love to have you here. And if you go to the high school webpage, you can see the full athletic, athletic schedule. Okay, so tonight, I think I have this number wrong. I just want to make sure that I have the number correct. So I have some thank yous tonight. First, I'd like to make special thanks to the Alacio family for their very generous donation of $7,460 to the theater program, which is on tonight's agenda. Mr. Alacio single-handedly conducted a season-long Monday Night Football fundraiser to raise money for the theater department. And his personal commitment is commendable. It was a lot of work, and we are just so grateful that he decided to make us the recipients of his generosity. So I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Alacio for that. And then I'll talk a little bit more about the wrestling in a moment. So that donation, in conjunction with another donation, which is on tonight's agenda, another very generous offer of $15,000 from the New Milford Education Foundation, will cover the cost, those two donations together, of a high-quality wireless microphone system and the necessary technology that accompanies that system. It's also my understanding that this wireless microphone system that we have priced out is also portable and will also be able to benefit the middle school productions, which is great. And of course, I have nothing about this type of technology. So I have the wonderful Dan Creek and Ron Watson working on these quotes. And I'm really excited about this opportunity and again, the generosity of the foundation and the Alacio family for that. We're hoping that we have the opportunity to get it in for this year's production. We're not sure. Sometimes, you know, delays and things like that, but we're hopeful. These would be the mics that come down here, you know, get taped to the face. So they're, they're legit, and it'd be great to have those. Okay, in addition, on the agenda tonight is a donation of student notebooks by the Castro Nova family and High Touch, which is a subsidiary of Staples. The value of $400. They are student, I believe they're moral notebooks for our reading and writing program. And I think they're being, I think they're at the middle school. So we thank all of them very, very much for their generosity, the time and their commitment and the commitment to our kids. Okay, so a lot of great things coming up. Page, information about the Peppini Nights, I'll say no. It's all on the Facebook page, website. Can't attend, but they would like work, New Milford High School ships. There is a QR code for donations. And that evening, we will have the Varsity Girls Hoops playing Wobwick at five. The Varsity Boys Hoops playing Saddle Brook at seven. And wrestling is against West Milford at 6:00 PM in the Mike Peppini Gym. Then, we have the What Is Love? What is Love Winter Slam 2023? This flyer can be found on the website, on the Facebook page. And if you follow us on Facebook and you would like to share it with the people who follow you on your personal pages, this is great. So this is a great WWF-style wrestling event planned by Mr. Joseph Alacio. And it is on Saturday, February 11th at 6:00 PM to benefit the theater department again. But there are other groups who will also be fundraising, hosting the concession stands, like some of the class-level groups. And I believe the trip to Disney will have a table for concessions and things like that. So it's a, supporting a variety of recipients. And there are, tickets are on sale now. We can only host 300 guests by higher code. So I highly recommend if you want to go that you buy your tickets ahead of time because it is quite likely, there are a lot of wrestling fans out there, I understand, and these people, athletes, have their own group of followers. And there's a good chance that we will sell out and tickets won't be available at the door. So that's important to know. So get your tickets down. What is Love Winter Slam 2023? I'm so excited about that. Ringside seats, by the way, have a special price if you want those. Okay, and I'd like to congratulate Paige Ryan for her notification as a Master of War member. We know that that is not an easy achievement. And I thank you very much for your dedication to making that happen for yourself and for us. We are beneficiaries of your group, so thank you so much. All right, so, okay, move this stuff enough, I don't even need my glasses. All right, so I always ask the principals and other leaders in the school to give me good news to share, so here we go. At the high school, the New Milford High School alumnus and visiting artist Christine Almeida worked with Mrs. Morrell, Mr. King, and the students yesterday. She was actually, having her come in, I guess, was afforded... That was really nice. She had a wonderful perspective, and it was great to see all of her success, right? So afterwards, so she worked with the students and then she presented last night. And they had an opportunity to do like Q and A about their stories and give them some insight on their ideas about how to illustrate. And it was, it was a wonderful opportunity. Our top pottery students were selected for a pottery throw-a-thon. This in-school field trip helped to support empty bowls on March 3rd, our upcoming fundraiser for the NM, New Milford Food Pantry. So great work to Mrs. Fenicia. I don't, I don't really know the details of the throw-a-thon, but I think that sounds like a great stress reliever.
For the empty bowls?
Yeah.
There are bowls that you purchase.
And then bowls that you can crash.
No. There are bowls that you can purchase, you probably put the soup in.
Right, right, you don't put the soup in.
But, but, so that's...
No, I know what the empty bowls is. It's the throw-a-thon.
They all throw, you know, on the wheel. They all meet the bowls.
Oh, the throw on the wheel. I felt so excited. I thought I was gonna go crash.
When you, when you do that, it's called throw.
Stephanie and I were gonna go crash the bowls, like, you know, we were actually like working on the budget for a while.
Although we may tell her that because maybe she has pieces that don't like.
That aren't so nice of me to do a crash party. I'm sure our insurance company would love that. Okay, so this Friday night, January 13th at 7:00 PM, in the finals of the New Jersey Chinese Teacher Association's Sing and Learn Chinese Contest, our student Christine Esguera, Jamie Leiva, Liani San Pedro, Veronica Ian, Aine, Alyssa Bertati, Ryan Franklin, Gabriel Fernandez, Devin Ryan, and Gideon Godfrey will perform a solo and a group singing in both Chinese and Chinese sign language. They will be competing against the contestants from other New Jersey high schools, Mandarin programs, singing other Chinese songs. So thank you, Mrs. Wen. And that is so cool. Special thanks to the academy students and advisors for sharing their project wayfinder information with the freshman class during the fresh start period. I'm going to post up pictures of that on the Facebook page there. At Davy Owens, our eighth-grade teachers conducted team-building activities just prior to the break where each of our homerooms developed and created skits, which were judged by their teachers. Fun was had by all, and the activity really seemed to make connections between our students and our staff. Congratulations to Ms. Joyce's homeroom for taking the top spot. We were so very proud of our orchestra and band students who played a mini-concert for their teachers at the start of school just before the break. The teachers were amazed by the skills of our music students. Please check out the clips on our Twitter feed, DEO, at DEO, on the DEO website, you can get to the Twitter feed, which is also linked to the website. On Tuesday, January 10th, our school nurses worked with the Hackensack University Medical Team to bring in trainers to instruct our students on the basics of CPR. They felt the need, the, the felt? In light of the recent incident involving the NFL player, the attention, I think that's what I'm trying to read here, I have this whole title here. The attention in the room of the students was tremendous. So I think, you know, having that, why do I need to learn this when you don't really have to teach them because it's so fresh in our minds? So that, that was a good, good time, maybe, really good time. And thank goodness he's doing so well. Okay, at Berkeley, our December Citizen of the Month characteristic was caring and compassion. The following students were recognized for their abilities to demonstrate caring and compassion throughout the school. Okay, wish me well. In kindergarten, James Lucien. In first grade, Cameron Nochek. Second grade, Mason Purino. In third grade, Isabella Rivera. In fourth grade, Dean Facilis. And in fifth grade, Bianca Tinesani. Our spirit club partnered with Closter Animal Welfare Society, CLAWZ, and hosted a fundraiser to support the work that the organization is doing to help rescue animals in Birmingham. Berkeley will be holding the spelling bee on Friday, January 27th. At Gibbs, special thank you to our PTO for decorating the front entrance of our school building during the holiday season. Really, really beautiful. We appreciate their dedication and creativity. Our, on Friday, January 6th, we hosted the first Gibbs Gathering of the New Year. Group of students and staff worked together to plan an assembly that focused around cooperation. Students participated in interactive games focused on cooperation. And each month for the remainder of the school year, we will focus on a different word of the month. And those words are cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. BF Gibbs cares. Cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, self-control. On January 19th, we welcomed Cassie Rodenberg as our new kindergarten teacher. Cassie's been collaborating with the team. She also hosted a meet and greet with the parents earlier this week, and we're excited for her to officially begin. In special services, the Wings Academy hosted an alumni holiday launch in December. Nationwide, only 30% of people with disabilities are gainfully new parent. Nationwide, only 30% of people with disabilities are gainfully employed. Just over half of our Wings graduates are gainfully employed. And we have two, currently have two students who are in career training programs, so we are well above the national average and very proud of them. In athletics, track coach Bill Hartney will be honored this upcoming Sunday at the State Coaches Hall of Fame Luncheon. Joe Rigardelli was selected by the County YMCA to serve as their athletic and dinner committee chair. December Student Athletes of the Month are Maya Axelrod for swimming and Tyler Caraccio for bowling. Reminder, the Peppini, I told you about. And we have senior nights coming up. Competition Cheerleading Senior Night is January 26th. Wrestling Senior Night is January 27th. Fittingly, at the Peppini event. Boys' basketball, bowling, swimming, and ice hockey are all January 30th. Girls' basketball, February 1st. The New Milford High School 2023 Hall of Fame Dinner is set for Monday, November 20th at McAlutso's in Hawthorne. Inductees will be announced by the committee soon. And a reminder, although it seems like it's far off because it's so cold. But the annual golf outing, which also helps to fund scholarships, is scheduled for Monday, June 26th. Final details will be shared soon by the golf committee. And lastly, from our tech department, new visitor kiosks have been installed in all four buildings at the secure vestibule entrances and at the board office. Let me just make sure I have everything. I also handed to the Board, we, we have been having some difficulties with transportation. Anybody who knows anything about education knows that transportation is really a difficult, difficult word to say in public these days because it's hard to find good bus drivers, it's hard to find reliable people to do the work, and it's a very difficult and taxing job. It really is, and it's an important job. So, one of the challenges that we are facing with having combined bus routes and not having as many buses going out as we would like is that our buses are returning to school later than necessary to transport all of our athletes to where they need to go when they have away games. So I have spoken with the attorney. I know that other schools are doing this. And we need to put measures in place in the event we cannot secure busing for away games. Now, it's important to be said that our largest team that travels is our track team. It's the largest team, and they travel the furthest, the farthest. And we will prioritize travel for the track team in the event, let's say, we only had one bus that could be there on time to get them remaining to be on time because when the gun goes off, if the runner is not in place, they are, they're disqualified. So we have a little bit more flexibility maybe when visiting a school for a different type of game with phone conversations with coaches and athletic directors and things like that. So it's important to know we will prioritize the track team, and this is not to say that we won't have busing for the other sports for away games, but we may not. And in that case, parents will need to help us with transporting their children. So what I've given you is a sample of a school-sponsored athletic declining transportation services with a release and indemnification in the event that parents need to transport their children. So I wanted just to let you know that I did receive this draft from the attorney's office. So he believes that, and it has been used in other school districts that they represent. And I just wanted to give you a sample so that you could see. It would also be accompanied by a cover letter to parents explaining what I just explained here. But I wanted you to see what it is that will be going out to the parents of our athletes. It's not something we want to do, but unfortunately, it's something we are going to have to do in some cases.
I forgot. Thank you so much.
Okay, bye. She's like, you're talking too long, she... Because like I need a snack, you're talking so long. Okay, so I just wanted to let everyone know that there are some things on the agenda that were not there when you first received it. So I just want to point it out to the Board that they are... to the boards that they are... They know that they are there. Under Educational Programs and Curriculum, we did add the trip to Ecuador under supervision of Mr. Cartiers and two additional staff chaperones. Ray presented last week. You all had some... Many of you had follow-up questions. I presented them all to him. He presented us back with a revised proposal. I realize that there are a lot of things when traveling that are out of our control. If you decide you want to support this trip, and of course, I hope you will, I will work closely with Mr. Cartiers, Mr. Manpelli, and the other chaperones to make sure that we follow world events and that we put all of the supports in place that we possibly can. And of course, I will have our board attorney review anything that parents have to sign regarding the trip to make sure that we're crossing every state and dotting every i. It's a crazy world, but we don't want the world's events, you know, to stop us from teaching and learning in an authentic, immersive way. So, I'm glad that he brought the trip to us. I'm glad he took the time to enter your concerns and the revisions, and that he supported the decision. Okay. Other things that were not there when you first received your packet was the approval of Elementary Title I. So, we posted, and then we had teachers step up to offer their services for that programming. So, that's what's here. And also, some sixth-period case manager assignments for a position we cannot fill. It's a leave replacement, and these case managers will pick up cases for the person who is out on leave. And it's actually fiscally prudent to do it this way for these people who are willing to take it on. It has been impossible to place a leave replacement in this position. We certainly have tried. And we thought we had a wonderful candidate, but then he took a tenured track position. And that is some, you know, a lot of the times what happens. The other things that are new were the donations and some professional development. And an approval for a volunteer at my care. Okay. I need a snack now. Okay. All right. That's the end of my report. Thank you so much.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Board. No any questions? Do you have any questions for Mrs. Chen?
For all that?
My name is Hoda Asa.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few quick updates to share with you this evening. In December, prior to the break, I had talked about a lot about our program planning meetings and conversations that were happening across grade spans in preparation for budget items that would be considered for the 23, 24 school year budget. So, I just want to fast forward a little bit and bring you to now and do you kind of like the next step and what that looks like. We have been working closely with the high school department in updating and finalizing the Program of Studies, which provides students an overview of course options in creating their schedules for the following school year. And the information that we have prior to break helped inform, right, the decisions that we're making as far as options for students next year and coursework. We're really excited. We spent a lot of time on it. It should be rolling out within the next week or two. But it includes everything in there from course listings, course descriptions. There's information about the academies. Our dual enrollment options are identified in there. There's a planning worksheet for students to use with their parents and their counselors in looking at their course track. And it's just a comprehensive document that I think you will find worthwhile and really explains a lot in detail about the high school program and the direction that we're moving. A lot of the things that we've been talking about this year will be reflected in there. So, we're really excited about that. On January 24, I will be sitting with members of our arts and music department, and we will be doing some curriculum writing. Sometimes that work happens during the summer. When we can do it during the school year, we prefer that because we can sit together as a team, work collaboratively, act alongside of the teachers, and work with them. So, we will be ironing out some courses that you should, in the coming months, see up for approvals as far as curriculum revisions. ESR. Recently, Miss Shandley shared an article. I don't know what. It was a federal paper. It was a national paper. Yeah. About ESR and all of the COVID money that has been made available to school districts. And really, just a brief overview is that it was... Districts are struggling to spend the money. But I will say that I do feel like we are in a very good place, and I did confirm this with Dr. Charr, Miss Shandley. There are three pots of COVID relief funds that have been provided to districts that we've spoken about. CARES being the first during the pandemic at the onset, followed by ESR II, and then ARC ESR. We have depleted CARES. A large portion of CARES was spent on getting the technology, the Chromebooks, one-to-one, so that we were able to continue, you know, provide for the continuity of learning during remote instruction. Then we had ESR II, where we introduced some of those more individualized initiatives, the professional development with Responsive Classroom.
Health and Wellness.
The Health and Wellness, the performing arts camps, the camps available to students, the extended school years. And now we find ourselves... So, we worked through ESR II, and now we find ourselves working through that last pot, which is known as ARC ESR, which is intended for the Responsive Classroom, Professional Development Institutes, which are ongoing. I want to draw your attention to P2223.88, which is the approval of Top Time Tier Three Interventionist, which is ESR-funded. We have done a lot of work as far as, like, really tightening our tiered system of supports. And we have worked with consultants across all grade levels in the middle and high school as well as the elementary schools to define what that tiered framework looks like and what supports might be available to students who are identified as in need of additional support. So, we are really happy that we're able to bring... Recommend Bonnie Krieger for approval tonight as a Tier Three Interventionist, utilizing those funds, who will work with our most vulnerable population at the highest tier. And we're really excited about it. This is kind of like that last step in the tiered framework or the pyramid that we have yet to define. And we've gotten there. So, I just wanted to draw your attention to that, and we're really excited about that. As I had said, we've been utilizing a lot of that funding to support the Responsive Classroom training, again, which is across grade levels. We have updated if you've visited the elementary schools, the kids that are in first grade classrooms, to support community building in line with Responsive Classroom. There's some flexible community seating where students are now not sitting at individual desks, but are at tables and working more closely with their peers. That seating arrangement, although it seems... It may seem minor, is actually conducive and aligns well with a lot of the programs that we have in place in the district, such as reading and writing workshop, returning to talkroom, working with partners, and working in groups. Our next two cohorts for formalized Responsive Classroom training are actually scheduled to take place next week. It is a four-day week. They will be... There will be identified teachers or... and staff members because it's not just instructional staff engaged in the training who will be taking part in the Responsive Classroom training. We also have our next teacher leader cadre coming. I have spoken about this. Ms. Shandley has spoken about this as well. This was presented at some of the state conferences. And the application went out to all faculty and staff. And I say all faculty and staff because it has moved beyond just instructional staff. And now includes other members in the district as well, aside from teachers. And I believe, last time I checked, we have 12 members of the upcoming cadre. But that will be rolling out... I want to say that that's actually on the 24th as well.
Yeah.
You know, so, not going on. But that's right around the corner. So, that's exciting. And that's all I have for you this evening. That's a good one.
Thank you, Lauren. Could I add something?
Yeah.
Lauren, you mentioned that article. I think what was so important about that article was the... Really spoke to the challenges for New Jersey schools. It was like comparing different states and how much of the funding had been spent by state and how New Jersey and some other states seem to be struggling. But what was highlighted in the article is that it's the red tape created by the state for what things can and can't be used for and to what degree that was making it difficult for some schools, some school districts to spend the funding. And I have to say, you know, way back when we started the academy program, and we were talking a lot about why the academy program and the focus on creativity and personal passion. And I found myself... I still find myself interviewing people. And I ask them, you know, how are you creative? And they will say, oh, I'm not like an artist or I'm not singing or dancing or anything like that. I'd say, okay, so, how do you create? And people are very often stumped by that. But I think you really do have to have a creative mind to develop unique programming that meets the needs of your students while still aligning with whatever structural demands the powers that be put in place for you to do, to use that money. And that is what we will sit around. And I think creative problem solving, especially with the budget. Stephanie would probably tell you she's the least creative person she knows. But the truth of the matter is, is you have to be a very creative problem solver to partner staffing, programming, and fiscal responsibility together. And it does really require, you know, a meeting of the minds. And we will sit down and say, okay, how is this going to work? How are we going to meet the needs of the kids? How many kids can we... Students can we possibly meet by doing this? And we've been really fortunate that we just have good people with great ideas. And so, it is important to be creative. And that's really good.
New Jersey has not made it easy.
No, New Jersey has not made it easy. And but we did get through the first two grants as we needed to. And, you know, it all went to serving the students. And in reference to your comments about the Program of Studies, I would like to thank you and Ms. Peter Friend. Because Ms. Peter Friend has stepped into the role of guidance supervisor this year and has really been a wonderful resource for you, for all of us, in helping, crossing the t's and dotting the i's and getting these tests, these major tests accomplished. And so, I'm really happy to have her fastidious nature and her i's on the program so that it's everything that we need to be for the kids. So, thank you.
I recognize you.
I have two questions for Ms. Hopson. Though I don't expect her to know the exact number to the penny, but what surprise makes you fit either. How much money do we have left at ESR to utilize? And what is the timeline that we need to utilize that pot?
So, ARC ESR needs to be liquidated by October of 2024. So, we have one more school year.
We have a summer, a school year, and another summer.
The application for these funds has... There's a needs assessment. You identify your needs. And then there's always an intended spending plan or proposed spending plan, how you intend to spend the funds. That was submitted, ARC ESSAR was submitted last January?
Yeah.
A year ago? A year ago. That being said, we were able to amend it as needs change and plans change. But, you know, here and there, there are some changes, but typically.
Your needs don't really.
Your needs don't change.
Change much.
As far as the dollar amount.
Yeah, roughly.
That's not my office.
When I said she, I was, I was referring.
Maybe we could get back to you, is the dollar amount.
Yeah.
Because what we may have sitting in a pot could easily be already.
But it may not be services have been rendered, whether it's a purchase service and technically paid at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, and I'll talk more in coming months about some of the things that we have planned. We are intending to run the ARC camp again. We're looking at a STEM camp this summer.
So some in Richmond.
Really excited to learn these real goods.
Any other question? Business administrator reports underneath the chart. What do you think?
So first, with some important and refreshing reminder that if you're experiencing a hardship, please submit a free and reduced lunch application. It's been brought to my attention that we have some very high balances across all four schools in the district. So I'll be sending out another letter to families reminding them to put money on their account. We do still take cash in the cafeterias, but just be mindful of these rising high balances. F twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, three is the budget calendar. So at this point, we've received all requests from the administrative team. And this is just a sort of roadmap through the budget with a final approval in April, 2023, which is going to be here before we know it.
What was the number again?
VA twenty-two, twenty-three.
I think you said half.
Twenty-five, three.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
VA.
There we go. And it includes the activities, the responsible party, and the tentative due date, which would, which would be done. And this is sort of, we know when the final public budget hearing has to be and so we build it backwards from April, 2023. Moving on to transportation, we successfully tiered another route. The first day of it was the Tuesday we returned and students were significantly late to school. I'm happy to report that the times are getting better and continue to get better as the drivers are becoming more familiar with the students on their buses as well as the routes. That's it, morning, midday, and afternoon have all been tiered. I want to, going back to the agenda. F twenty-two, twenty-three point one-one-six is something that I'm really excited about because it's not very often that anyone in my office or the secretarial staff ever gets a professional development opportunity. And Mr. Shoup is a former business administrator who really has a strong focus and really powerful professional developments about purchasing law in the state of New Jersey. And this has been a continuum problem here in New Melford, really a problem across all districts, et cetera. Right. That, but it's important to be mindful of it. And I think after COVID and being remote for so long and having to move through digital purchase orders, that we've sort of lost sight of that. So I'm excited. One day is for the administrative staff and the second day is actually for the administrators. So I think it'll be really great. That's to close out this budget year. And then the idea is for it to take some time in February so that it's right before the planning of next budget. I'm happy to report that over the summer, I was talking a lot about the direct install project, which was a big energy savings that we were able to outfit and retrofit lighting as well as replacement of boilers in both Gibbs and D E O. The only old boilers that are very old are here at the high school because we have steam heat here. So those are the only ones that are not high efficiency. But last year at this time, we had spent sixty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars on welding our boilers at both Davy Owens, the high school, and Gibbs. And I'm happy to tell you that we spent under ten thousand dollars. So not only are we realizing savings through the high efficiency, but we're also saving on not having to constantly pour money into old boilers. And now if I could turn your attention to my presentation.
I can't wait to see the graphic.
I use Canva, so don't be too. So the secure vest of fuel I've also been talking about. And I just want to share with you sort of how this process started. So there was identified a need by administration. It was actually under, it began when the former superintendent was here and then it was seen through under Ms. Shanley. So it was brought to the facilities committee, I believe for the first time in 2020, really worked through in 2021 and finally approved by the Board of Education. That's a typo in 2022. This is not a good start. The planning of the projects started after that. We went through, I don't know how many different variations of the plan. Demo and removal of furniture, the furniture was actually donated to them, so it didn't go to waste. It was also moved throughout the district and then the construction began.
Was it, was it fun?
It was loads of it.
I know.
So this is what it looked like before. So for those of you that don't know, the stairwell that goes up into the high school was actually where the entrance formerly was. So someone on my staff or the superintendent's side would buzz somebody in and they had access to the entire building. So they could just freely move around. Thankfully, they would always come to where we told them to, which was right here. June, this was June twenty-seventh, I believe. They started to break ground on the exterior of the building. These are just some construction. I'm actually in the bottom of this picture, that's why I chose it. You can see me.
Bottom right?
Bottom right, yep. These are some more. This actually, this top, the picture to the left is actually one of the requested changes I made because I thought, how is anyone ever going to clean up there? So now it's slanted so dust doesn't collect because that was going to be like the next problem. Everyone's going to be sneezing because of dust collection. So you can see how high it is, like there's me and then there's, there's the ceiling.
And letting the light in was really important. The office is, you know, very dark with Monday.
So these, these pictures are today. So you can see the exterior, it has a sloped ramp to meet the ADA compliance. You can also see that there's, the, the existing entrance still does exist so that high school staff members do have access to the building there without coming through the board office. But any visitors or packages or deliveries or mail, they come in through there and then they, they leave it, they can leave it at the window or that's, that's an area. And then the third picture, all the way to the left, is looking out. You can see one of our buses parked there, so you can sort of see the best wheel there. So the first picture, sort of in the middle, is the office that technically is on the superintendent's side. So we previously had three offices. We now have what I like to call four and a half because this one is shared between both sides. There's a door on, door on each side. And then this is the configuration that we have now. So this is, this is what we've been working off of. It's sort of really working out now to have this, this here. And the total cost of the project is two hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And it was originally budgeted at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And we had fun.
And we had fun. We are still not yet complete. I'm missing half my desk. We're still missing filing cabinets. So we're expected to have that all by, I'll say equal.
Some things on wheels, some, the miners.
Yes. The lights are very, are very bright. We unfortunately don't have multiple light switches. But we're high efficient. So. And I think that concludes, concludes my report for this evening.
And then, yeah, questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment more along the lines of the safety and security. So the safety and security in a building was, has been and always will be, you know, something that we want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on. It's not just the cameras, it's connection to the police department, it's the exterior, interior, all that. So the entrances into every building was one of the first things that was addressed. But the board office was one of the last. And to your point, if someone buzzed in, they walked into that, that hallway with the stairwell and then that was it. They could go right up the stairs and into the building. Like you said, fortunately, that hadn't occurred. But now we don't have to be concerned about it and know that it was a little bit of a struggle for the, for the central office to go through all of that and your team to really be displaced for a long time because you weren't all the way along. So just thank you very much because that is a better feeling to know that that entrance is in. Now, there is really no entrance to any of our buildings. We can lock all the other entrances, they can only come in one way. It's really helpful, so thank you.
And under budget.
And under budget, yeah.
Good job.
Okay, any liaison or board committee reports?
I have one. Okay, so the next, I know I'm not going to be a Burton County SBA delegate moving forward, but the Burton County SBA virtual meeting on January thirty from seven, eight-thirty, I think it's virtual because they only provide us a link, so I don't get to see in person. But the topics covered are going to be mental health, mentoring, school security, and sustainable funding. The link is online with the NJ SBA website, but I can also charge it to everyone. The next NJ SBA conference is on school finance. It's on March first from nine a.m. to two-thirty. And then an interesting note, I think, that NJ SBA put on their website was that on January fourth, and I'm sure you, you probably are going to talk about this, on January fourth, the governor signed a S five-eight-eight into law, which requires school districts to incorporate its charge on information literacy in the K through twelve curriculum. It's something I'm standing, you're, you're aware of, it's something that was publicized by NJ SBA. And basically the department of. Of the NJ SLS. The law defines information literacy to mean a set of skills that enable an individual to recognize when information is needed and to locate, evaluate, and use effectively the needed information. Information literacy includes, but it's not limited to, digital, visual, media, textual, and technological literacy. And the standards will address topics such as research, the research process and how information is created and produced, critical thinking and using information resources, the difference between facts, points of view, and opinions, the economic, legal, and social relationships surrounding the use of information. So I hope that was interesting. I think we've all seen social media and how disinformation can spread just within schools and within everywhere. So I think that's going to be a really interesting topic that's going to be addressed at schools and good luck.
Thanks.
Putting it together.
Just to add one more thing to the grid.
Anyone else?
So it's, it's not a report, so there's no minutes for any meeting, but the ad hoc bylaws committee. So we left off at the end of last year with the remaining, I think it was twenty homework for them. So, you know, looking at that committee, I don't think it has changed. So, and because it's ad hoc, the plan is to finish that up within the next month or two, depending on everyone's schedule and that we get that done. And that also was the first of the board goals. So just to, and then once that is complete, we'll recommend that we quickly be dissolved after that.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, so agenda items for discussion. Review of board action. I just want to bring up before we approve on the committees that I, so two things. There are three ad hoc committees and, you know, they're there temporarily to eventually resolve something and dissolve it, like Paige said. So the question is, you know, moving forward, have we, we've not done much with the public relations. Originally that was for, we were going, we were considering a referendum, we never did that. So the question is, do we want to continue with that committee? Do we want to dissolve it? The other question is, I know we started the ad hoc new member orientation. I think it would be a good idea if we could work on that to finish it maybe by, you know, in a month or two months, also to help out Mr. Lombardi. That was the point, to bring on new members and then we can do a good orientation for them. And then, you know, there have been some suggestions to maybe combine two committees, which would be facilities and finance because they kind of go hand in hand. But that's something we can vote on and think, if you guys want to consider that. Okay? Does anyone else have any questions regarding review of board action? Chair, can I ask Paige?
So it's a what you just said about facilities and finance. This isn't for, again, just to keep in mind that the participation will, will reduce. So for those of us that are on committees, you can only have four board members. If you have five, you have a four. So if we do that, then potentially whoever is not on one or the other will no longer be on the committees because you can only have four people. So just keeping that in mind too, trying to keep it similar people and similar topics because they align. Just again, as a board, I know there was concern about having participation in committees. We would, we would reduce it for a good reason, but then that would be limiting on participation, so.
More recognizes, do you want to?
So how do we have the discussion as to whether or not we think we should combine facilities and finance? As to just vote on it?
Well, here, now, yeah. And then we would vote on it if we thought.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before we approve the next committees.
I'm sorry?
Before we approve the committees in the next.
Okay, then. So I don't necessarily have any opinion on it. But I just was curious as to if this was going to be like a discussion that we're having now and before we vote on it or not. I certainly would be interested in hearing about people's opinions if that's what you have.
Chair?
Can I share, can I just share my, my thoughts on it, which may be helpful to you guys? Because I find when we're working on the agendas, so much of the big ticket items are driven by facilities and so it's very repetitive. And so it's, it's a good opportunity to have more board members included. But if facilities committee wants to support something and finance committee doesn't, then it's going back to finance, to facilities and saying, would you like a different project? Or would you like something? So it's like, and I find a lot of times it's needed back to back. And so trying to get those meetings set together is also sort of a challenge. So I think a lot of what's said in both of those committees is really over.
Right. So if you want to do a project and you present it to facilities and facility says, yeah, that's a great project. And you say, okay, well then we're going to take it to finance. And you go to finance and you present the same project. And then they're voting on the project or not. It's, they, they really are, they really do go hand in hand.
So it's a streamlined, basically, that process. The other, don't want to mess up. So as far as PR goes, if the intent of that was for potential referendum, whenever that was formed.
That was one piece, yes.
Oh, but wasn't the whole thing?
No, part of it was also so that there was communication to the community, the things we do on the board. I think Ms. Shanley has been doing a great job of changing that and putting out what we do good in the community, posting also at these meetings, saying the good news on the past out there. So that was the other piece of that committee.
Okay, so what Paige was saying about the intent of any ad hoc community is when it's finished, it's finished. So if we are going to be talking about a referendum again, then I would think that would make sense to keep PR. But if that's not something that we anticipate off-year, then my thoughts would be that there probably isn't going to be a fourth this time. I don't, I don't know if we do intend to do that or not.
Well, we can take a vote.
Well, if I could just say this and Stephanie can confirm with me because she knows these deadlines better than I do. It's my understanding that even when, when you want to do a referendum, it's got to be included in your budget, right? We're too late for that for this year. Late for a December referendum if we wanted to. For the, does that have to go into July?
Yeah, yes. It's a bit because then it also has to go to the state for approval.
Right, so do you think putting, dissolving public relations, let's say for now? And then maybe if we decide that's how we want to go at another time, we could kick it up again and say, if you would like to be part of this. I also feel, and this is just my personal belief, that if, I would only really feel comfortable going to the community for an extra question. And I say extra question because you can break things into parts. If, if the board fully supported that. Because we are each our own public relations committee. And if we are not all in support of this and this work, it's sort of silly to, to, you know, spin our wheels and promote something if we're not all supporting it. So I kind of feel like it shouldn't fall on just a few members of a committee if that's where we really need to be.
Chair, can I, Paige?
I agree. And when it is time, we can, because we can create an ad hoc committee at any time. But I do feel that once you get to that point, because we did sort of go down that road a little bit to understand it's more giving time to give the public all the information they need. So yeah, we have a deadline, that's definitely the case. But it's not even, we're going to do it, we're going to do it. We, we really need the time to bring in the public, to get all the meetings, to do all the stuff. That's where our public relations committee would be assisted because you have to coordinate all of that. And you don't want to have a board meeting every time you're trying to decide how that's going to work. So, but I do agree that we, if we're going to do that, I agree that we should. So if there's a time to vote that you want to do that, we can do that.
Yeah. Tom?
With regards to committees, and I've thought about this for a long time. I would like for, in whichever manner could take place, for the board to consider moving personnel from committee at the whole to perhaps a standing committee. Because I, I feel that whereas in public meetings you're limited to what you can talk about in terms of personnel, we get our information, you know, there's a lot, there's a great many good programs involving appointment of people. And I think the board would benefit from a committee where periodically discussions about that type of programming can take place. It takes place in our curricular portion committee. But I think from a personnel standpoint, it aligns with finance as well. I think that's something that the board should consider. If it's too late to do it now, perhaps in the future, just to have more involvement and information with regards to personnel. Many nights, we approve the most resolutions in personnel, but we never get a chance as a committee to discuss it. So it's hard to, you wouldn't have a personnel committee prior to every meeting where you're taking action. But over the course of time, it would give a portion of the board the information of what the vision is in terms of personnel. And I think that would, you know, tonight later on, well, when we get to personnel, I'll have a question. And I think a committee in place would be able to proactively answer those questions.
Okay. Chair, can I ask Andrew?
So back to the combination of facilities and finance. Do all of the committees go through finance at some point? So like education program comes up with an idea and then has to go through finance? Does athletics have an idea and have to go through finance eventually as well? Or is it facilities specifically, it's just, does facilities ever disapprove something that goes into finance?
Yeah. I mean, we, we would talk about that. Let me go back to the, um, does everything go to finance? Well, when we create a budget, we create a budget with a certain number of full-time employees and a certain number of part-time employees, and that's all in the budget. And when we approve, um, staff, um, on an agenda, they are part of the budget. Or we are telling the board, this is an additional FTE that was not part of the budget, just so that you know. And this is how we're paying for it. So anything that appear, or it may be like when Lauren presents something, S or funded or Title I funded, which is, you know, entitled grants and it's not funded by the local budget. So when approving the school's full budget in the spring, within that includes all of the people we currently have, let's say. Or the board will be notified, there will be a reduction in two staff members, and this is where the reduction will be. And the public will be notified of that too. Or we are adding this position and this position and a part-time secretary and going from part-time to full-time here. So when you approve that in the spring, you're approving it for the following year. So when you see negotiated stipends and we have a certain number of coaches or assistant coaches that are part of that negotiated contract. So anytime you see that approved here, that's, the assumption is that it's all budgeted. And only if we were adding something new, like we talked about this year, adding an assistant track coach at the middle school, which wasn't budgeted, but we needed because of numbers. And then we made it very clear to the board that was an additional position. With facilities, those are usually not things that are part of the budget. Sometimes they are. Improving the catom in the driveway, we may, that may be part of the budget. But it also may be something that Stephanie tells you, we're going to use this reserve for this project. So usually when it's larger facility projects, Stephanie will either tell you in the meeting how we're paying for it within this year's budget, Robbie Peter, Payton, moving things around. Or we saved forty thousand dollars in heating this year, so we're going to use that to pay the parking lot, for example. Now, forty thousand dollars is not, not going to pay the parking lot.
Save the forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand dollars tonight in this room, yeah. Or, but usually those are larger pieces, like we have X amount of dollars, we have a million and a half dollars in capital reserve, and we want to do roofs, and we'll talk to you about the need at the facilities committee. And then the finance committee sort of endorses it, you know, we need a roof, so.
I guess, I guess my question is, is your point with facilities is necessary for to not waste the finance on listening to something that, that might not be.
There are, yeah. I mean, definitely. I mean, facilities have said, well, if you're going to do that, well, if you're going to do that, don't you think we should also consider this? I mean, we definitely have conversations in those meetings.
Through April and it sort of tapers off thereafter, but there's a lot in those first couple of months. And the only time that you can withdraw from capital reserve is in your budget. And so with the age of our building, we have a lot of facility needs. And so what does the board want to support? But that's obviously driven by a large dollar amount. And if we're going to do it in capital reserve, that's really a decision that's made in finance and not necessarily in facilities. And so it's a, it's just a lot of overlap. And then there's a need for two committees to be meeting very frequently on the same topics from January through April. And then they sort of taper off and then there might be a more of a need for one or the other. But really, if facilities is meeting, finance is meeting.
And in other districts, they are combined in other places. If I can respond to Mr. Albro's question about the personnel. I don't remember when, and I would be interested in what our attorney has to say. But I think I recall us eliminating a personnel committee.
Yes.
Because we were teetering on, um, you know, then you're ricing people multiple times and teetering. Okay, so way back, I remember having board members, for example, sit in on interviews for like my position, Lauren's position, principals, et cetera. Um, and the New Jersey school boards advises against them. So, and I think it might have been Matt Lee, I'm not sure, who recommended that we eliminate the personnel committee. So it was based on a recommendation that we eliminate and that if we do things by, not by committee, but by the full board, we avoid the ricing unless it really has to be riced. Or board members overstepping in the hiring of employees, which was not something we struggled with here. But I think that New Jersey school board sees a lot of things and so they make recommendations based on all the things that they see. So, yes.
You could pick up the personnel committee without going by name.
Okay, I'm just saying that, that was the.
I brought it up, you know, I, I have no desire to be involved in the hiring process. I agree with you that school boards round a great deal on school board members' involvement in, in that process. I just think that it would cut through some of the red tape for the board when we see something in committee as a whole. It's, it's subject to when you decide to read the agenda and when you observe a position. Again, I'm more, I'm more inclined to think about programs and positions and not so much the names of the positions. I mean, we, we've added positions over time and there really, there might have been discussion in curricular programs and I had a discussion in effective finance, but from a personnel perspective, we really haven't had that discussion. And that was the basis of my suggestion.
Stephanie, do you still have a question?
Yeah, I have another question. I was gonna ask you, like, are we being through a, um, disband ad hoc committee for public relations at this time as well? But I also see the value to what Tony was saying in regards to personnel. And we can't vote on that tonight. My suggestion would be to maybe clarify it with Matt Lee and the attorney to see how we can possibly do that in a way that doesn't have us treading on, you know, dancing on the lines we shouldn't be dancing on. So that's my, that's my suggestion.
That's okay. Char, I'll go first.
Everyone else is talking, so I.
Well, I just want to make sure you get her.
I wanted to get before Joe. So, so the community, the, um, the public relations, so this has been like a, something that I struggled with as board members since I started, is the idea that as board members, you know, one of our responsibilities, right, is supposed to be to like frame the concerns of the community to, you know, to the board or to the district, whatever it is. And I, I agree with you. I think, I think Superintendent Chaney did a great job of community outreach, you know, based like for, for the district, right? So my suggestion, and I think I made this like a while ago, is that if we could, if we're going to disband the public relations committee, um, maybe convert it or, or, um, create one where we could focus on community outreach like for the board, right? Because I, I, you know, I kind of, and the reason I struggle is because we're all part of the community, like we're all involved, right? And so I, I struggle with like people coming up to me, asking me like a board question. And sometimes I'm like, run away. Or, you know, I try to have a conversation that's not confidential or something like that. So just an initiative maybe or something I think about as far as, you know, unfortunately, we don't have great attendance at these meetings. And I know that it's, you know, for a variety of reasons, people are busy and they're late and it's, it's like a nice chest in here. Maybe nobody wants it.
Well, we're streaming, we're streaming, so they could be home like one ear on, like, you know, let's hope.
Just the opportunity to kind of engage and like ask questions and things like that. Um, it's just something that I, that I've always, you know, you know, not everyone's like, like the people that are in this room. They're happy and available to come here all the time and ask questions. And maybe not, people aren't, don't want to sit here and sit through the whole meeting. Or even maybe are, are camera shy like I am, you know, shy about speaking in public. We're like, what?
What?
So that's just, that's just one of the things that I've always thought about. It's one of the things that, um, you know, again, whether it's, you know, to the extent of, oh, to what extent, it's within our purview, is, you know, always a question that's out there. Something that I still think about regularly. So it's just something that I want.
I just want to add, we don't have to do anything tonight. It's up for discussion and we can neither. We can, right, we can revisit it. We can have a meeting, have an ad hoc public relations, figure out how you want to create it or do something and then dissolve it. So it's just a suggestion. Nothing has to be done. It can go for a vote.
Cool. But just to piggyback on like what Cheryl was saying too, like I want to commend Mrs. Chaney because she does give the public that opportunity when she does offer out coffee with the superintendent, where the public does get that opportunity to ask questions, maybe that they might not be comfortable coming to our board meetings. You know, she's had a few special guests. I've popped out a few times just to like.
The next one?
Yeah.
It's Wednesday, January 25th.
So that was just, like, I feel like that piece is already like out there for people, the live streaming, things like that. So just to piggyback on, just to throw that out there as a reminder to the public that, you know, when those links are out, they're posted on the New York Web site, they're emailed out, you some, I get reminders via text. So that communication is available.
And I also just wanted to let everyone know that I will be launching before the end of this month, the, um, the, the seeds for, um, profile the New York Graduate. So that will definitely be to pull people in from the community. And they don't necessarily have to participate because there will be things like surveys and opportunities for people to participate, you know, silently. But that will be going on, um, between, you know, January and June. It'll be wrapped up by June. And then, um, that will help serve as the vision, um, for, you know, as moving forward. So that's definitely going to happen by the end of this month. So there is second.
Regarding the dissolving possibly of the public relations, as Ms. Sharon just said, our last two district goals and our last two board goals start with promote communication, meaning engagement by advocating for participating in, acting for participation in the creation of, I would think, whereas the administration might develop the ideas, the public relation committee, that would be a task for the administration, but how to best disseminate them to the commission.
Okay, Paige?
I'd like to make a suggestion. Um, so school boards encourages additional training and, and also at a board level as well. And Matt Lee has offered previously, we do our work, we do our retreat in the summer, but he's offered to come at other times as well. Um, I'd like to make a suggestion to have him come, uh, find a meeting where he can come to the meeting. Maybe we meet a half hour earlier instead, we change the meeting time, whatever. And really let board members just ask questions around this committee structure because there are a lot of things that, um, I don't think everyone understands fully. And it's a good reminder to everyone of what purposes of committees are, what board, um, what you can do as a board member, what you shouldn't do as a board member. There's one point, like before I was even on the board, I would go to PTL meetings when my daughter was in kindergarten, and a board member come to each PTL meeting. One board member would come to the board meeting. And school boards and Matt and, and everyone, our attorneys all said, that is, that is actually not something you should do. No one board member should represent the board in any way. Anytime there is board business, it should be as a whole and not separate. So there may be other ways to do what people are talking about. But having them here, having him here to have that conversation, to go through it would be extremely helpful. Because I think, I think we all probably agree with that as well. Because we can all talk about what we think, but it would be good to have him come. That's, that's a recommendation that I would like to make.
Okay. So I think we've had a lot of discussions regarding this. So to move forward, um, well, because I can, you know, just have a question. So are we, do we want to decide on combining negotiations? Negotiations, I'm sorry, facilities and finance, that's one thing. And it seems like we want to keep the ad hoc public relations right now and then eventually, we can eventually dissolve it if you want. That's something I want to, so we can move forward with approving the rest of the items.
So, yeah, consensus wise, for we, because you presented all of the committees to us. If we want to just take them as it is and then make a decision after so that we have committees, so that we're not going to the committee without them.
Oh, right, right.
Right? Or make a decision now and then vote on it at the regular session. That would be, that would be the two choices. Go with it now, have more discussion and make those changes after this, this meeting. Um, or make the changes right now and then vote on it in twenty minutes. Those are the two things.
So you want to take a consent?
Yeah.
Take a consensus to see how.
Do you want to say this now first?
I was going to say, um, I think we should agree on what we have right now. And then have Matt come and then we need to restructure, bring it to a vote again at that time. That's my, that's my view.
Without the cremation, so.
Yeah, that's.
That's permanent.
I just want to say one thing. So, um, with facilities and finance, it seems to me like people generally think that that's probably a good idea. Um, I'm on both. I was on both, like, I think I've been on both. I was on both last year. And, and, and with the timing on Dr. Kuchar was saying, a lot of that's done in the first quarter. I'm perfectly fine with combining. That's, that's my personal opinion. As far as, um, the, the PR goes, I can see it both ways, uh, you know, based on what Tony put out there in our goals versus if we're not at this time, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if we could cause of that, but I was totally on the other side of that until he said that. So.
Okay.
I can see that.
So should we take a consensus to combine first?
Be sure.
I think we can do that. Okay, so who is in favor of combining?
I have a question before you do.
Sure.
Someone will not be on the committee.
Oh.
So I just want that, I would just want that decision to be made who that, who that will be.
I have a question in regards to that. Can a person who is not on both committees, the one, the outlier, can that person be an alternate in case somebody is asked and can't make them a meeting?
I actually don't know. It's not going to be two people. There's four on each committee. So one's on one and one's on another. Those two people, one of them will drop. I'm not saying you shouldn't combine. I'm just saying, like, pick the short straw.
And I'm not, I'm a, it's a problem.
So there are two.
It doesn't affect one. One can stay and not have to go from each.
So I can, don't we just read it out loud?
Yes.
Okay, so for facilities, it's Joseph Lunam, Nicole Don, Andrew Lombardi, John DeCosta for there. The chair is Joseph Lunam for facilities. For finance, the chair is Paige Ryan, Joseph Lunam, Cheryl Calderon, and John DeCosta.
Is that six different people?
Mm-hmm.
And Jonathan.
And Jonathan.
So does one still, only one comes off?
For each.
Oh, you can have to score, correct?
Yeah.
And I, I think Policy only has three people.
Right.
Maybe one person is interested in moving to Policy.
The one from the office?
One from each committee.
So first, if you want to combine, second, you're going to have to decide.
Right, right.
There's a chair who's.
Should be decided between.
I just have to tell you, I've been taking wrestling lessons.
Does that mean you want to be chair, Paige?
Yeah, I'm joking. I said, who's going to be the chair? It's a two of us. Like, well, I just want to like, no, I've been practicing wrestling. I'm joking.
Okay, so let's take a consensus to combine first before we knock some people off it, committee.
Well, I'm just saying, if it is combined, then what you'll have to do is you will have to regroup and reassign it.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't need to make a complicated.
No.
I don't need to wrestle.
I know. Maybe you guys could go to this, you guys could wrestle here.
I'll say all that.
Put it on, the main event.
The main event.
Okay, so let's just take a consensus quickly, combining the two committees. Okay, so that's, that seems like a consensus. Okay, so then I have to figure out who we're gonna get to meet it up. We'll just make it one, please call.
F and F.
F and F, okay.
So wait a minute. Fine. What's a good news is that the, uh, prefix isn't going to change.
No, it's F. I said it's not.
So can we, so you don't have a committee and we just approve your F? So can we, so you don't got a committee and we just approve your F?
Yeah. Okay. Can you go back to this now? Okay. Does that any, we're going to review educational programs and curriculum. Any questions? Okay. Review of personnel recommendations? Tony?
I'm reading this. Two twenty-two, twenty-three point nine, um, asking whether that was budgeted for or what has caused the need of that position.
Which one was that?
Do you mean nine zero?
Nine zero?
Nine zero, I follow that.
That is a replacement for a retiree who is currently part-time as well.
And I just, if I can follow up.
Mm-hmm.
I have asked author if that information could be included in the resolution.
Okay.
A replacement as opposed to new.
Sure.
Segment about that, so.
Yeah. Okay. Review of finance? Any questions? Review of facilities? Review of athletics co-curriculum? Any additional board items? Old business? Joe?
New business?
New business?
So, um, I had reached out to President Gomez over in the week, um, on our, I was scrolling through our website and on our website, um, it lists the members of this board. And then the picture underneath it, um, there's only two people in this room that are in that picture. One of them is Paige and one of them is Superintendent Shandley. Long before she, um, was in the current role. So I think that we need to either do one of two things. My suggestion would be to delete the current photo because there's. Look, you look good.
We usually take a yearbook picture and that's what goes in there.
Yes. I think we should just delete it because all the people that are listed in the, um, they're not the people that are in the photo. So I think we should delete it. Um, and then whether or not the board decides to take another picture or not, whatever, but.
Okay. Is that the picture that still has like Justin Flores as the student represented?
Yes.
Yeah. It's like, we do have to know which page it's on because it's not one page, the board page. We've updated it. We've removed that specific picture.
We have removed that picture. So now like where.
Other buildings, it could still be in existence. So I'm wondering if you have to. Actually.
Well, we'll take it.
Yeah.
Because we thought we removed that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's on NMPSD.org.
Yeah.
But which page?
It's not under. So like sometimes you have, if you go to central office or, and then you go to board, or if you go to a school and then you go to board. It's not like one page that then mirrors onto these, um, webpages. Yeah. I just want you to the URL if you don't mind. Oops.
I don't know if you're.
Text it to yourself.
I'll, I'll find it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You go ahead.
Okay. Um, open to the public as outlined in New Milford Board of Education by law zero one six seven, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. I need a motion. Paige Ryan, second by Nicole Dunn, all in favor, um, opposed? Any questions from the public? Please state your name and address.
Uh, Tamara Flary, two course X strikeouts. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment based off of, your name is Cheryl. I apologize if I said that wrong. Um, something she had said about the board serving, uh, the public. Um, from talking to other people in the community, I think one of the problems with getting people to come here and stuff is the board seems very not approachable. You're approachable as community members, but in talking to you about stuff, about the community, you're not able to be approached. I understand that there's a chain of command and it's talked about every time we come to a meeting. But I know I teach in Jersey City and you're able to email the board members, you're able to reach out to them individually and I don't believe you are. I've never been able to find your email address, so I don't believe you're able to. I know in the district that I work in, they're on the board, like they interact on Facebook, um, which may be overstepping. I understand that. I don't really know what the rules are. But they also, two or three members will have like caucus meetings, I guess you would call it, where they have the community come to just not necessarily solve problems, just hear from the community. Um, I think one of the complaints that people have had here is that when you voice something, there's no response back necessarily. And not everything can be responded in here, but I think moving forward, I think that's one of the complaints and problems I hear a lot about from other members of the community is that you're here to represent us, but we're not allowed to interact with you. Um, we're not allowed to share things with you because we have to follow the chain of command. And I understand that's there for a reason. I understand that completely, but coming from a district where there's a lot of interaction with the board members and the staff and the community, it's a very different experience here. And personally, I've struggled with that. Like, I'm used to being able to email the board and things like that, um, in my own district. So I just, while I'm considering whether or not you're going to have that committee, that might be just something to consider. I do know, having reached out to other communities, um, other districts, I've heard from other districts that they are able to at least email concerns and email comments to board members. Um, I don't know if that's part of policy or by law or anything like that, but that's an ongoing complaint I hear from people. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, does anyone else from the public have anything to say, any comments? Okay. I seek a motion to close to the public. Stephanie Coffinger, second by Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So, um, I'd like to respond if possible. Um, you, you named your, your home district of where you work. I, I'm, I'm not speaking to them in particular. Um, it's my understanding based on the training that we've had by New Jersey school boards, that because some districts do things, doesn't necessarily mean it's school board's recommended way of doing things. Um, nor is it necessarily following the code of ethics that board members are held to. I can tell you that I worked in another district, um, before I was in, actually when I was in my first administrative position, where board members were interacting with teachers. And three of them were then sanctioned for months, weren't allowed to sit or speak in their role because they were interacting with teachers about the work of the district, which is not a board member's role. That's my understanding. Communicating with board members via email to address problems within the district. We don't have their board emails listed for the public because that is not the what, that's, board members don't run the district. So they, their job is to see that it is well-run. Um, if you haven't read the code of ethics for board members, I recommend that you should because I think you might see some things in there. Um, that you mentioned tonight that happened regularly in another place, um, that New Jersey school boards would not support. We here have been, um, in the time that I've worked for the district and I came in two thousand and ten, we have numerous master board members like Mrs. Ryan. We were actually a sitting master board at one time and recognized by the state of New Jersey for that because we do things the right way. So I'd love to pat ourselves on the neck publicly for doing, um, things the right way, but I will let you know this, that I am certainly available if the public has any questions or concerns. But I can pretty much guarantee that board members will not be holding caucuses in New Milford, um, because that is not their role. If you approach a board member and they appear to be maybe uncomfortable with the conversation, it's probably because they're aware of the fact that they don't run the district. And their answer to you may be something like, have you told the principal? Have you called the counselor? I really can't do anything about that. And sometimes when parents come to me, I will respond by saying, have you called the principal? Did you call the counselor? Because until that happens, I really can't do anything about that. So we really do, you know, try to follow the rules. Um, what other districts do, I read in the paper, uh, quite frightening. We've been really lucky here that everybody has kind of toe the line and done our own job, each and every one. And they, they work on committees and they, they do that work and they question, um, me and Stephanie and Lauren and, um, I think that they do a really good job of representing the public by challenging us and saying what, you know, they believe the community wants. So I hope that they are serving you in that capacity, which is what I say, maybe, maybe the public doesn't see and hear all the questions and the things that are expected of us before things wind up here. No, thank you.
Okay. Any additional board member requests for additional information? Okay. I seek a motion to adjourn. You didn't.
No.
I want to take it.
That's your last part. I seek a second. Stephanie Coffinger, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we're just going to go right into our next meeting. Everybody did. No, we did the last salute, board statements. Okay. Committee of the whole. I seek a motion for the approval minutes of December sixth work, December sixth regular, December sixth close. I, I was in there.
We have to take a motion.
Yeah. Sorry. I was whispering. But I'm staying from that. I seek a motion. Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Superintendent Schools report, any additional? Oh, wait.
We're just going to.
Oh.
I say.
I say.
And does Mr. Lombardi say?
Okay.
And we say aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me, me and Stella Ward are saying. Okay. Then do you have any additional things to say? Okay. Lauren, anything additional? Oh, I thought you said something. Oh, Stephanie?
No, we're good.
Okay. Any additional needs on board committee reports? Okay. Open to the public for items on the agenda as outlined in New Milford Board of Education by law zero one six seven, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Seek a motion. Stephanie Coffinger, second by Joe Lunum, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please state your name and address for.
Lineal page one thirty-six, Quentin. Just wondering, P twenty-two dash twenty-three point eight six, is that a mathematics teacher for the high school? Yes. From the high school, okay.
Any other questions from the public on the agenda? Can I seek a motion, close to the public? Paige Ryan, seconded by Angela Lombardi, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So before we do the board action, can I give my suggestion for the two new committees and the people on it? Okay. So facilities and finance, it's F and F, Paige will be chair, Joseph Lunum, John DeCosta and Cheryl Calderon. And then I would add Nicole to policy and that would fix all the problems of everyone in the world. Were you on? Did I take you off of one? Who you pointed?
I was, no, I was on the facility, but I'm just on my policy.
Okay. Okay. Right. Is everybody okay with that? Maybe I, you learn a lot in policy. I will say that. Um, okay. So.
No, I just wanted the names.
Oh.
And could I have the person for Andrew? So we've, we need institutions, we have minutes. And before the meeting, the agenda, so you'll know. So if you have any questions and then during the meeting and so even though you're not there in the room, you're still going to see what's happening. And then we report out, everyone gets a copy of minutes and then before the next meeting, yes. And then add meeting.
Okay. So for board action, I seek approval for B A twenty-two dash twenty-three point thirty-five, point forty-eight, point forty-nine, point five zero, point five one, point five two, point five three and point five four. I seek a second. Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Except, so that it doesn't say on here who the delegates and students are, but it's in your committee name.
Yes. Do you want to read them?
Yeah.
Okay. So for the Bergen County School Board Association, the delegate will be Stephanie Coffinger, alternate, myself, Heather Gomez. At New Jersey School Board Association, the delegate is Cheryl Calderon, alternate with Angela Lombardi. Stephanie, you know? Because you're the chair of educational.
Oh.
I seek the motion for C twenty-two, twenty-three point twenty-five, point twenty-six, point twenty-seven.
Second. Paige Calderon. Paige Calderon. Oh, my God. Combine them now.
Yeah.
Wow. It's a new one.
Paige Ryan.
Can I just say that my maiden name is Calery?
Oh.
I'm like, wow.
I knew that.
I do too.
And so.
Do we get?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Personnel recommendation, having recommendation of superintendent, I seek a motion for P one thirty-six and point eighty-eight, point eighty-nine, point nine zero, point nine one and point nine two. Seconded by Paige Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Calderon?
Yes.
Ms. Coffinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Lunum?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Dunn?
Yes.
President Gomez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Eight zero. Finance committee?
I make a motion to seek approval for F, F, we're just doing it by whatever.
Yeah.
F two-two-five, F twenty-two dash twenty-three point nine nine, one hundred, point one oh one, point one oh two, point one oh three, point one oh four, point one oh five, point one oh six, point nine oh seven, point one oh eight, point one oh nine, with a thank you, point one ten, point one eleven, point one twelve, point one thirteen, point one fourteen, with a great thank you again, point one fifteen with another great thank you and point one sixteen.
Please say. Nicole Dunn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So you're going to do facilities team then?
Yeah. I make a motion to seek approvals for F A twenty-two dash twenty-three nineteen, point twenty and point twenty-one.
Seconding Coffinger, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Athletics and co-curricular committee?
I seek a motion for A C twenty-two dash twenty-three point thirteen.
Second.
Don't let them, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any additional items? Any old business? New business?
So that was this, which you did turn up, um, ask again, which is about the profile of the New Milford graduate.
Mm-hmm.
Because I was actually thinking of that when I was going to the meeting today. Like, oh, I wonder how that's going. So if you started to, could you just repeat what you said is happening?
Yes. So I'll be, um, issuing, uh, like, uh, an informational letter with a survey. That'll be the first step. And then based on the results of the survey, we'll play in groups to work on the profile, but I will launch something before the end of this month.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the second one is on the district vision issue.
So what happens is, and I didn't know this when we created the goals, but I went to a workshop on creating profile to graduate. And then what I discovered was that the profile, once it's complete, actually becomes your vision. Is your vision, mission. That, that, that is then, this is what we want to see at the end and what we do. Here's how we get there.
The word.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
New business? Was that new business? No, really, some of them are old. Okay. New business? Open to the public as outlined in New Milford Board of Education by law zero one six seven, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Seek a motion. Angela Lombardi, seconded by Stephanie Coffinger, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions? No? Okay. Seek a motion to close to the public? I know. Matt, do you know what I'm saying?
Oh.
I was looking at you. I was like.
Um, I actually don't have much of an update because we just had our reorder last week. Thank you for allowing us to use your facilities.
Our pleasure.
Our pleasure.
As for all the good repairs, and congrats to all of you who have been voted re-elected and those who are newly elected, and good luck in the new year, live, working with you.
You too. Let us know if you need it, I mean, I don't know when your repairs will be done, but you, may I have a good chat with you?
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
Seek a motion to close the public. Cheryl Calderon, second by Nicole Dunn.
Aye.
Opposed? Board member requests for additional information?
Oh, I have something. It's not a request for additional information, but I think I wrote it in the discussion with us as a board. The comment that was made regarding approachability of board members. So I hope that when we have Matt Lee here, because it will be part of the public lead, so everyone can hear it, that everyone can really fully understand the differences and nuances between what is part of your board ethics and what your role is as a board member, because there are, and we go through this during, not everyone maybe realizes, but when we go through this during our retreat, we actually review board ethics and we review examples of, is it, is this a violation? Is this not a violation? What happens? Is it a sanction? Or, you know, just the different various things that board members can and cannot do, and a lot of them are innocent to us because, you know, we're part of the community. So it would be good for him to be here because in some ways, there are things that we can do as a board, and in some ways, there just aren't. And when you say it individually, it almost seems like it's like an arm's length, but it's, it's really more than that. And so I think, again, I just, I think that when we have him, that it's important to have him here sooner because I think that will really help keep that going and rather have perpetuate the perception that it's not, that we're not approachable simply because of, you know, those ethics. So I, I, it shrinks this more now, my, my thought that we really need that here. Not in the summer, but in a, in the new year, our chart can be part of it, so.
Did I jump to Matt Lee?
Yeah. Just clarify something, I, I don't know what, I don't know if I'm being clear about what, what, what my concerns were. It's not that I, my concern is this, is that, you know, for the NJSPA, we're supposed to bring to the district the concerns of the community, right? And, and that is, you know, my focus is that as nine people that sit here, I can't, I, I'm not, you know, I don't have the understanding that I know what all those concerns are just from my own personal, you know, you know, you know, life, you know, life, whatever. So I would think that we all know what those concerns are. So what I was trying to drive at is that I'm trying to figure out a way that we can better represent the community by kind of learning what those concerns might be that are outside of what our understanding would be. And whether or not, you know, and obviously to do it in the, you know, in the context of what our ethics obligations are. You know, because there is always like, you know, there's obviously a line that we all walk that, that's a fine line because we're all members of the community. So my whole point of just bringing that up is not, you know, is just to think of, are there better ways that we can do that? You know, I understand that, you know, Superwoman Stanley, that, you know, does her, you know, level of outreach for the district. But, you know, we're a separate apartment, you know, to some extent from that. You know, we have to do our, I think, and maybe I'll, you know, I'm misunderstanding our duty here. Maybe I'll, you know, when we, when Matt Lee comes, you know, we can further clarify is that, you know, I'm just looking at ways that we can kind of, or at least, you know, maybe I can, or whoever it is can, can improve some of that interaction without going outside the bounds of what we're, you know, required to do. It's not to step on toes and try to run the district or anything like that, but just with the understanding that as community members, as human beings, as parents, as, you know, you know, everything, we don't fully know what community wants all the time, and that's just what I was trying to drive at.
And I was not speaking about what you said.
No, I didn't.
I was speaking about what the person said.
Yes.
My question would be, you know, just even if it's a simple meet and greet, is that something that, like, just saying hi? Like if after the meeting was over and I walked over and introduced myself to her?
That's fine.
And said, you know, it's very nice to meet you, thank you for coming, you know?
And she said, you know, by the way, I'm blah, 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 and just say, great, it was, you know, nice to meet you.
All right, that's inducting your own private caucus.
Right.
Would not be.
Would not.
Right.
Like if I said, okay, let's meet for drinks and you can tell me all about it.
Right. Right. It's a good example.
That is gonna be on Mass Max training.
Yes.
No, but I, like I said, I think it's important because it is hard. It's very hard for us, so.
Okay, can I ask something? I have additional requests.
Oh.
Yes. Well, because two of the members are also part of negotiations, which we have a lot of those meetings, so if we can just get some dates.
Oh.
I can't change that. No, but we have two members that are on negotiations that are also on finance, and so it's like trying to get the calendars together. So if you guys can work together and give us some dates would be really helpful.
Okay. Can I ask something? Yes.
It's not, I, it's not really a request for additional information, I, but I wanted to stop the opportunity to, on behalf of Mr. Hattiers and his students, who have been trying to prepare to build houses in Ecuador for the most unfortunate, I just wanted to thank the board on his behalf. Because trusting him to take students out of the country is, it's a big leap for many of you who may not know him or his work, and we promise we will do everything in our power to cross our Ts and dot our Is on that trip to make sure that our students are safe and that the board is legally protected. And I just, I'm sure they will be really excited to know that was approved, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I'm just seeking motion to adjourn. And Cheryl Calderon, second by Paige Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.